Let's begin with the United States of America and the United States of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, we need a motion to approve our agenda?
You'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to carry minutes on number seventeen.
I'll read through the minutes, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Not in favor?
Aye.
There's a motion to carry approved claims. Look through them.
I reviewed the claims. It looks to me like we have sixty-seven thousand, six fifty-two, ninety-four in general claims, drainage of forty-one thousand, oh thirty-eight, eighty-nine. I move the approval.
Second?
Second.
Home in favor?
Aye.
Post motion carried. Elder Bridge on Aging, we have, whatever you want here, seventy thousand, where did I see that? Seven thousand, ninety-seven dollars and ninety-five cents.
Same as last year, yes.
Is that the same as last year?
That's what they were questioning around that, but we only seen him sixty-nine.
I was gonna say, I thought you'd think that.
For the last couple of years.
So what do we do right now? We just accept their request and at the budget time we will...
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the request on Elder Bridge Aging for their dollar amount, seven thousand, ninety-seven point seven five.
We decide that.
And we'll decide a budget time.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Not in favor?
Aye.
Oh, let's see. Okay, the lease for Pat Conwell, Wensy Manager, for the fire station in Humboldt, for ten hundred dollars a month, I think it is, for him to store his trailer and so forth in that facility.
He is now satisfied with the language and needs original needs. I'll be there whether he get access to fire station in emergency, or he would have to contact the city clerk for permission, so we fixed that. Aaron was saying okay with it, was fine to me, but Pat happy with it. It's just one of those things where it's just that, show contact. City clerk should provide access upon request, and Pat was concerned, how am I gonna get in there if it's two o'clock in the morn? I bet we can fix that.
Yeah.
They were fine with that.
Okay. Motion to, I'll raise the chairman to sign that please.
I would move the approval. Chairman give approval of signing the lease for Wensy Manager story?
I'll second that, and it looks like, I remember six, the landlord is taking care of the water, sewer, gas, and heat, and electrical, and air conditioning.
Mm-hmm.
So that'll be good, because you know, if he would've been at Rottland, we'd had to cover that too, so, and this is a lot better situation, I thank the city for their support.
Any other in favor?
Aye.
Post motion carried.
Okay, Alicia. Okay, um, I'll be some more specific, but, um, the Home Base Iowa Initiative, I'm sure you've all heard from the governor, was the governor's plan to bring veterans back to the state of Iowa. Um, so taking that a step further, each county can elect to be a Home Base Iowa county, um, we're taking it a little bit further and trying to become the first Home Base Iowa region through Mid Iowa Growth Partnership, thinking that if the whole region is a Home Base Iowa region, when someone is looking at coming to the state of Iowa, they show the map with all the Home Base Iowa counties, we would stick out, because we've got nine counties. So, we've been working on it quite diligently in the last few months, and part of that process is to establish a base incentive package. So that base incentive package for veterans that are coming to Humboldt County and interviewing at a Home Base Iowa business, so that's the kicker, you have to be interviewing at a Home Base Iowa business, um, is a meal voucher up to fifty dollars, a hotel voucher up to a hundred dollars, and a welcome packet. That will be given to each vet, um, that is coming in and interviewing at a Home Base Iowa business. The thought process there is welcoming them into Humboldt County, letting the business sell themselves on the interview, and then provided that vet is hired and lives in Humboldt County, each of the cities can increase their incentive package. So for example, some cities are doing two thousand dollars in down payment assistance, and some cities are doing tax abatements for the first few years. So that's totally on the city level, we don't have the jurisdiction to authorize any other incentive. So, from Humboldt County development standpoint, we are just providing the vehicle for that. So we are saying, we will be a Home Base Iowa county, and we will be a Home Base Iowa part of this region. If you want to entice someone to live in Humboldt County, then Wright County, then that's up to the city to increase that incentive package. Um, the base incentive package does look a little bit weak, and the purpose of that was to allow the cities the flexibility to increase. If we make it too competitive to begin with, then there's no latitude. Um, and the feedback we've gotten from the state is that you should treat it just like you do business recruitment, because workforce is such an issue these days, that you wanna make sure that you're providing incentives to get that vet into our county. So my board has approved the cost associated with the base incentive package, so we will cover the cost if the vet comes to us. Because of the way MIGP is structured, being that the county is, um, the one that appoints the representatives to Mid Iowa, we are requesting that each county government support the Home Base Iowa initiative. So, formal support from you guys saying, we support this, and I have a sample proclamation, Peggy, if you're interested, but just something that says that we'll support this, knowing that the Humboldt County Development Association will take ownership of the costs associated with it. The same with the signage and things like that. Once we get the designation, we are required to put a sign that we are a Home Base Iowa region, we'll cover, our board will cover that. I'm not sure what that plan looks like. Now, we'll partner with Mid Iowa, and they'll provide some designs as well. So, just wanted to come to you guys today and let you know that we're working on that program. We believe in it, um, one, because they're vets, they're highly, highly skilled. Aside from their skills, though, they have the soft skills. They get up on time, they show up to work, their leadership skills are there. So, we really wanna recruit that demographic, not to mention, there's so many of them that'll be coming out in the next few years, that I think it's a really good way for us to try to beef up our workforce. In addition to that, the state's marketing it for us, so they're going to all the active military bases and talking to them and showcasing Iowa. There was a study that was done in a military recruitment magazine, that said that Iowa has the best program of any other state. So I think we would stand out for that reason, I think people would choose Iowa for that, and then hope that they'll choose Humboldt County from there. So, at this point, there's no financial obligation, it's just formal support of the initiative in relationship to Humboldt County. So, I did, Peggy, I'll bring, if you want the word version, I'm happy to send that, but if you wanna, it's just a really general proclamation that says that you support the military and the troops, and finding them appropriate workforce. And then you guys are a skilled Iowa business, and so all you, if you're interested in becoming a Home Base Iowa business, all you need to do is sign this, you've done everything else you needed to do. So I just brought that in, if you are interested in becoming a Home Base Iowa business. Other than that, I don't have anything, I hate to rush through it quickly, if you have any questions, certainly shoot them out, but, like I said, at this point, it's very easy, just formal support of the initiative in relationship to Humboldt County, and no financial obligation, nothing, we're just asking that you guys help support it. And I would say, I guess there is one more thing I would request, please shoot it out to your cities. I've sent it to all the city clerks, but if you're not familiar with it, it may be a little bit difficult to understand, how do I, we'll take care of the legwork, if anyone is interested, if anyone has any questions, just put them in contact with me, but if any other city is interested and wants to have that conversation, certainly let me know, and we'll make sure that we get out there and explain the program a little bit more, so.
It's a good program.
It really is, it really is. And it has, one of the questions that we've gotten is, is this, does this coincide with the term of the governor, and that when he's gone, it's gone, and it's been funded for five more years.
Oh.
So, I'm quite certain the legislature won't take it out now, I'm not sure that'd be a political good move, but, so five years, we've got for this program. And you know what? Workforce could totally change in five years, so we're looking at it like this is a good five years for us to get this program going.
We wanna get started early.
Really market it, yeah, yep, and try to get some people here. So, we're positive about it, we've done a lot of work, and this is one of the last steps, so.
The fact that Iowa's rated high, that's good, and the fact that they're gonna help support it with you, you know, the...
That's right, that's right. And you know, we thought, gosh, okay, we can do all these billboards and try to recruit all these people here, but if the state's gonna go to the military bases that are, that's a ready and able workforce, I mean, you know, then let them market it for us, and we'll reap the benefits, and, so, yeah.
Well, if you're able to get three people to come in, you can make your packages a little better, if you don't have to spend it all on advertising too, probably.
That's exactly right, that's exactly right. And like I said, we will, Humboldt County will opt to be both a Home Base Iowa county and part of the region. Some are choosing just to be part of the region, and that's fine, we'll do them both, because I want that extra visibility, that we're part of the region, oh, and there's, you know, here's the list of counties, and here's the list of other entities, and, so, just for double the visibility. But, if you have any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer them, if anything comes up, if you think about it. Like, it's at this point, just super easy, just some sort of formal support, that you guys will support this initiative, so.
Very good.
So we're gonna put this like on the agenda next week, too?
Yeah. If that's okay, I think, yeah, just so you guys have some information, and it's very, you know, I'm, I'll send it to electronic, it's a little easier, very simple, just a very simple proclamation that you'll support it, and we'll go from there. If we have any more questions, let me know. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, the chairman's really on camera.
Yeah, he's rolling.
Morning.
Good morning.
First order of business is, I would recommend that we hire John A. Wyder, uh, starting twelve, one, fourteen, um, per the union contract of the apprentice rate of nineteen dollars and sixty-nine cents, and then contingent on six months of successful employment, he would move automatically to twenty dollars and fifty-six cents.
What's that name again?
John A. Wyder.
John or John?
John.
Wyder, W?
Wyder. Wyder, W-E-Y-D-E-R-T.
Tell us about it.
He's from Gilmore City. We have a brother of his in the system already, and his dad retired from Humboldt County a few years ago.
Is this a lineage thing here?
In light of things, I haven't talked to Donnie yet, in light of being Donnie's son, we hired him anyway.
You nailed that against the interview.
Nope, nope, we tried to keep that out of the picture on rating him.
As a busy writing lady, would you give the start date and the rate of pay?
Uh, twelve, one, fourteen.
When's he been working prior now?
He's been with Martin Marietta, and prior to that, he was, uh, in a contractor in, uh, in, in Algonah, I'm drawing a blank.
UBC?
No, one of the dirt movers.
Oh, getting Redding.
Redding, and then prior to Redding, he was blacktop service, and...
A lot of experience.
What's that rate again?
The rate, so the union rate per union contract apprentice is nineteen dollars, sixty-nine cents, and the maintenance rate of twenty dollars and fifty-six cents. In other words, I'd like to not have to come here in six months.
Got you.
But, no, we had a find, uh, interview, we interviewed several, and all of them came with experience in little different things. We had several good, uh, several good ones to go to, and, uh, there was thought of even trying to hire more.
What was the report to work?
The report to work here in Dakota City.
Okay. So, would you have interviewed seven or eight?
We interviewed four.
Four, so you got some good candidates.
Uh, we had the same interview team, it was Jeff George, Ben Wilkson, myself.
Do you have a motion?
You'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Not in favor?
Aye.
Post motion carried.
Second order of business is to approve voucher number three to Ruggnus Brothers Excavating for work completed on the three projects. It's the LC thirty-seven nineteen nineteen, LC twenty-eight twenty-nine oh nine, and LC thirty-nine oh two sixty-four. Um, this represents, uh, a big chunk of this last project. As of now, there is some tile work remaining and some riprap. To finish this project, the contractor starts out each day by stripping any of the frozen soil and starting over. Um, and, uh, once he got started and passed go with the bridge out, we're encouraging him to finish, as opposed to sit and wait for better weather.
Are you getting unfrozen material from the dirt pile in Hardy, or?
Yeah, then we just core, we dig into the pile where...
Figured what's must be doing, opening it up and getting from the center, or whatever?
Yep, peel frozen, and then, uh, then strip. We have hauled some back, we agreed to haul some of it back, instead of trying to waste frozen soil on site, let's get it out of there. It's beneficial to both of us to get the project done and get out of there. So, he is trying to do it right, and if you review his...
The one that's frozen's the one up north in Vernon, is this where?
Yeah, it's where we're finishing, yes.
Saint Joe.
No, no, Saint Joe's done, and gone.
Vernon area.
This one's the one over in Vernon, right off the Vernon School Road, be a mile and a half.
From the school building, it's back to the east, and then west, and then back, and then north?
Nope, straight west. It's straight west off the end of the blacktop, uh, what, a mile and a half, straight west, from the T Road.
Okay, that's past Water.
It's before, before you go turn south and hit south.
Just to break that curve.
It's the upper end of the dredge ditch where you guys cleaned up to it, but didn't, this is a branch, it isn't the main open, and I recommend that you look at cleaning this, baby, but that's a different issue.
You need somebody to pass water.
Right, I know it. This, uh, this is a branch, this main wasn't clean, the rest of this whole thing was cleaned, and...
It was.
You need to get this cleaned, before they won't let you clean it, but, anyway, that's...
And that's the part going back to the south?
No, this part goes clear back up into Cram lines, or...
Oh, Kramer. Oh, sure.
Goes clear up.
Not that's been cleaned, has it?
You're just trying to increase my bill.
No, I, I know, but...
I already got stuck for that once this year.
We need to get stuck again, but, uh, that open part of the ditch, uh...
You know, it gives me no benefit.
But anyway, back to the project, the project was started, they set all the box, uh, I believe Wednesday, and, uh, so Friday, uh, they, almost there, they need to have some fill.
The warmer weather made it better, or hindered?
Uh, it just makes the top greasy.
Just makes it greasy, man, it sounds.
But, for the excavators and whatever, uh, we'll peel and, uh, we'll live with it to complete it. I think, as long as you strip the top, we can do okay on this. And it won't, it'll be gravelled, so it'll be, be our stuff, fix and maintain down the road here, so what it amounts to, that's why we're, uh, watching, and the contractor's very diligent in peeling the frost out and getting rid of it.
Just out of curiosity, where do they haul that concrete and stuff that take out when they tear these out?
Uh, they load it in side dump, I don't know if they paid with some backs here, up in the quarry, or sometimes they haul it.
Somewhere.
Just go home, take a load home with them every day, and they have an outlet for the stuff, so, um, sometimes they clean it up and they tend to reuse it, they may have their own pile, that they have a crusher on that.
That gets a lot of it nowadays.
But this was reinforced, uh, some old bar here and there, and, and the foundations were very substantial, I mean, they're huge, but, uh, we removed them, um, and, uh, put in this eight by eight in, another nice project out of, this one wasn't such a bad structure wise, 'cause it was built before, ingredients cost much, I assumed in the twenties, but it was also only sixteen foot wide, or whatever.
That was a narrow one.
So it'll be a much improvement for that neck of the woods up there, we'll run around on the west side, it's what, eight miles?
Yeah.
Because it's an oddball shape.
Yeah.
L-shaped, and then you gotta go back around.
Okay, you need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the voucher number three for Ruggnus Brothers.
I'll second.
Second, any other discussion? Not in favor?
Aye.
Post motion carried.
I see, I see I have this in the wrong order, 'cause I didn't look at this close enough, but we did find, uh, on project number two, we found a tile that was connected to the driveway pipe. Because we thought we had the tiles accounted for as best we could, but when we tore the driveway out this fall, we had running water coming into the side, some enterprising tile or tiled into the side of the driveway pipe.
So we're rerouting that one?
So we rerouted it, uh, and agreed with this, uh, to authorize Mr. Ruggnus, and with the landowner's cooperation, we rerouted the tile well beyond the right of way and out of the way of all of this. And he agreed for six hundred and sixty, got it by the...
Six hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number three for Ruggnus Brothers.
Thank you.
Any other in favor?
Aye.
Post motion carried.
And finally, what you've been waiting for is the two thousand and fourteen weed commissioner's report. Um, I did copy it and included it with your packet. We note that it's, uh, no spray, uh, we did not spray anything this fall, and, uh, through the summer, our response was not any spray, and again, we did mow a few spots, locations. Generally, uh, again, one of our biggest problems out there with weeds is where we have overspray with, uh, non-selective herbicides, and the ag side wipes out the back slope of the ditch, or part of the ditch bottom, and then it grows completely bad with broadleaf.
That's what the water hamp likes to start to, some of that.
Huh?
Water hamp seems to like to start to do it.
And there's, yeah, and what do you do with that, then, when it gets in your broom? How do you handle that? And there's no broom in water hamp.
Paul, a little bit related to that, you know, we've talked about it before, is there a, no, no, I see, I see they had, what, thirty-eight counties or something, taking this free seed for, go ditches and so forth, but they don't spray, have we ever considered doing that here?
We did it a few years, uh, in my early tenure, and with this free seed becomes the free, there is things that cost you money with that, and, and the maintenance and the requirements of when you use it and where you use it, uh, it doesn't match with us up here in the very pot hole region. We're not gonna use it along the road, because some of these plant heights are four feet or more, uh, even the little blue stem is fairly tall growth, and you're not supposed to mow it.
Because of snow. There's no problem.
Snow and any...
In the summer?
We did, uh, we have remnants of some of the flowers that we seeded with this, uh, in the past, but, uh, it, it isn't suited for what we're using roadway. If we had a high back slope somewhere, uh, a big cut through a river, and something removed from the, from the roadway, I would recommend it, otherwise I wouldn't recommend it, because...
Brom does such a good job.
Yeah, they south here on Gottsch Park Road, they scraped up the ink back. He's probably seeding that himself, isn't he?
That's something they're looking at themselves, that was part of their work in the right of way agreement.
So I remember that.
Uh, they're gonna put some kind of ground cover of some sort in there that they don't have to mow, which is...
Okay.
But, but again, with that, uh, we took it a few years, and we took the wildflower seed, and, and that gets very difficult on where we put that. We ended up using the last of that at, at a bridge over in Beaver Township, for instance, put wildflower seed back into the dredge ditch on the side, and there are a few flowers coming up there, but, uh...
The brom will cry out the weeds better than the wildflowers.
Right, and, and it takes multi-years to get this to establish, and then even with brom, if, if the lord's on your side, you can look like you know what you're doing, but if you don't get any rain after you seeded, it doesn't matter, it takes multi-years, and...
Yeah, the brom may not look good the first year, but the second year, kinda surprises you how good it is.
Right, and if, and then, what we attempt to do then, in year two, where we seed, we attempt to mow it down, uh, mow it...
Get weeds out.
Try to knock the weeds out of it, and give the brom a crack, a chance, and then once finally the brom takes over, then we're okay. Uh, but, but the foreman didn't like it, our maintenance staff didn't like it, and some of the requirements that come with this free, uh, we're kinda like our federal aid funds anymore. At some point, we're getting federal aid funds, but at some point, we can't afford the free money.
I'll move to approve the twenty fourteen weed commissioner's report.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Not in favor?
Aye.
Post motion carried.
Some of it, uh, in some, some cases, we got most of what we wanted, I, I think we got most of what we wanted along any highways. Um, we have an ongoing debate internally as to whether it's worth the effort, or if we can, if we're that deep in snow, we can do much better with a machine and a livery.
Yeah, just plow it up.
Yep.
Make a natural one, obviously, but they do work.
They do, if, if we got the snow, and if we don't have the snow, then the snow fences...
Then you don't need the snow fence.
That's, you know, so there's where some counties aren't using it.
They're pretty willing to let you ridge it up if you just call and ask, and they're pretty good about that, or that's, they do it in my area.
For the most part.
Well, maybe I'm too easy. They always call and ask if they've got snow fences.
Right, and even, even the snow fence, there's some locations that we can't get access, because they're not done yet, 'cause they still think they're, just like me, wanna put an IGRS on yet. What, what's the odds?
Not so good.
I think...
There's a program in some places you drive through the state, you see a few rows of corn still on the road.
That's state routes.
State routes, they pay for that, and then the farmer eats the corn at the end of the year, but then they left. I mean, they just pay them for...
Sometimes they run, uh, round here, a few years ago, one guy combined pretty much the whole corridor, uh, along one sixty-nine, but I don't notice that we have much around here anymore. But that's a DOT program.
Or feds forever. So we look at your balls to do.
Yeah, they could.
Otherwise, uh, yeah, unfortunately, I think we're in full blown winter, looks like we're in winter this morning, again, reports of icing to our north, um, heard it on the radio, and also had a message this morning that they wanted to do a walk-through on the Pine Avenue railroad crossing with the DOT. Remember the DOT, the railroad, uh, and the county put a crossing gates on Pine Avenue East deliver more this summer.
Yeah, that gravel's ruined.
Yep, we agreed to do it, didn't cost us anything, we don't have to maintain, yep, they wanted a representative, they wanted me there at eight-thirty this morning, left me a message this morning at ten to eight, but anyway, it's built, done, it's a matter of signing off, but it's complete. The only negative about any of those is, ultimately, if we improve it, we have to protect it with guard rail.
Oh, really?
Oh, really. Because you couldn't hit the train, you know, you gotta have the guard rail there.
So you can't hit the train.
Sure you can't hit the train.
Yeah, it doesn't make a bit of sense.
Speaking of guard rails, there's something on New York that's a lot worse on the ground.
I mean, they don't want you hitting that little sign, so now you'll hit the train instead.
Well, in this case, there's a mass stuff, which is nice, because you can see it, half mile south, you see it. I mean, improvements, as I told the DOT man this morning, I said, you'd never believe if you'd driven that path fifteen years ago and drive it now. I mean, fifteen years ago, that was before we cut the trees down, we cut six-foot of dirt off both sides.
Yeah, and they figured...
I mean, we really opened her up, and, and we're very fortunate that...
They did a good job, they moved a lot of dirt, and it really made that better.
And we're very fortunate that nobody got.
Talking about guardrails, maybe they, again, the DOT, but there was something on news the other day about some manufacturer that changed the spec guardrails, and they, they're hurting people, and they're making change, the DOT's gotta back off and get something different. Have we had any word or anything in our guardrails?
Haven't seen anything come through the pike, um, I heard some of it, so I could say it must be making a point. Uh, it's not that Fleet Three Fifty, 'cause that Fleet Three Fifty throws, where you see the square ends, when they hit that, it just peels and throws the guard rail out to the side, just a zip, and it might be the ones before that they end up going... When they hit that, it just peels and throws the guardrail out to the side, just a zip and it might be the ones before that they end up going through the grill, through the car.
Like a spear, yeah.
And I'm sure that'll come.
I'm sure you get a memo out of it.
Well, we'll get something if it, uh, uh, most of the time, your grandfather did on those and occasionally, we're not.
Hey, Paul, did the hedges around our new buildings, are they coming good or do we have to, do we have to replace a few more?
We had replaced some this summer.
Are they coming though as a whole?
I hope so.
Okay.
We bought another round of about a fourth of what we planted the year before.
Yeah, they should be getting started here pretty quick, okay.
Otherwise, we're in winter and we're not December yet. Um, other maintenance activities that we were planning on doing that we normally do this year, I don't, or this time of the year, don't know if we're gonna do them at all. We, we did knock down enough of the snow that we talked about in foreman meeting last week, getting out there and trying to get the singles and, and, uh, start working on brush clearing our trees again, um.
Daylight?
Yeah, and, and on daylight today too, it's a nice, but again, we're.
We're getting a few trees.
We just need to keep at it and, and take a little at a time, don't have to do it all in two days. Pretty good thinking, gentlemen. Thank you.
Community report.
Okay, last Wednesday, I had a ministerial meeting and they talked about food pantry and they go using more food. Adam Mo was there talking about, uh, baskets, I talked with Rick about that this morning, we need to get some stuff down for them to haul baskets out. Fairgrounds, so they had a special request, if anybody's interested, the Salvation Army is trying to get people who work one hour shifts ringing the bell. They're hoping we get approved and afford houses in the cities and so forth, so if somebody's interested in doing this, we can get over to Pat Hill and set up a time when you'd be willing to work.
I just sent an email of, of employees last week to check down from the.
So, if anybody's wanna go down and ring a bell for an hour, she pays, she can sign you up, or Pat Hill. The other meeting I had was, uh, Mid Iowa Growth Partners, we had a meeting in Fort Dodge on housing and one of the interesting things there is some of the different counties are doing housing studies and one I was particularly interested in, Wright County gave a report on their study. They spent sixteen thousand dollars on a study and Hagee paid for part of, the city paid for part of, the towns paid, anyway, pretty, ninety-six pages long. They're projecting housing through the year two thousand twenty and they got demographics and ages and social money and it's really, I don't know whether Humboldt's gonna win or not, but other counties.
Well, we've done with it in the past.
Yeah, we have done.
Yeah, since we've done one, that might destroy it, I think.
Was it around two thousand?
My district's there, so that's probably right.
This was two thousand, I think, two thousand one?
Some Fairfield company or something, anyway, that was a very interesting meeting, I thought, we also went and reviewed some more on this demolition I talked about last time where they're buying up old houses or destroying them and I don't think we have that particular problem in your communities here. We might have some, but it'd be a good way to get rid of some eyesores.
That was an interesting article, you know, there was a program the other morning on TV earlier, it was in Detroit, Michigan, and they had a twenty-four million dollar grant from the government, federal government, and they took down sixteen thousand homes. They said these houses have been gone for so long, it's where all the crime is, you know, and they're even thinking about putting big areas back into farming because the problem is there might be one house in a block or four block area, well, they can't afford to run electricity, sewer and water in the future, so they want to get rid of those and just clean the whole area of them.
It's good to do, go back to farming and in the cities, they get them back on the tax rolls, cause those people aren't paying taxes anyway, so. It's kind of interesting to follow what's going on, but I had those two meetings, buddy. One was Monday, let's see, when was that one? Wednesday was, uh, no, Thursday, the twenty-first was, uh.
Twenty-first, okay, gotcha.
Long Night Housing Cleanup, last week burnt one of them down, it's really been an eyesore for ten years and then they also burnt one Saturday or Friday of this last week. And then they, another party took over one of those lots that we took the tax or forgave the taxes on and they've got it all cleaned up, so they're gonna get rid of three and they, they got about three more they want to do, but they worked in the fire department and they were able to, through Humboldt Woods.
Old burn.
Which is named on your M F or F F.
Thompson.
Thompson, yeah, he works with getting the plan wrote up and they can do two of those a year, so they were real happy to get rid of those.
Well, we discussed in here, did I hear that at the meeting, you know, if you have an old house burning, old gram check, the fire department's called, they have to put it out.
They have to put it out because of insurance. If they get a call, uh, it's a state law, you gotta put it out.
Better, better burn.
Yeah. I know you would, but you can get sued if you don't, so.
Wrong, yeah.
Peggy, I didn't have a meeting last. I had, um, I had my other meeting, which I wasn't able to attend and Carl filled us in with it on that, the Christmas baskets and, uh, I guess they, uh, they're doing their bikes for tikes program also. Um, but I went down to the EPC meeting on the Hawker Farm building out here on Highway Three. So, I'll kind of back our vote of adjustment, uh, they did a nice job presenting their case and I supported them in what they talked about, uh, watching out for the ground, you know, runoff mainly and into the Boone River, um, EPC of United Appeal, so it's going forward.
So, what day was that?
That was Wednesday. That was it for me. We had one, uh, uh, EPC meeting up here. Oh, yeah, I forgot about that one, yeah, we had up here.
What was that, morning?
Huh?
What was that?
We had that meeting last Monday afternoon too.
Oh, that's right.
EPC, that's the, uh, Friday the twenty-first, I had, uh, juvenile detention in Eldora. Humboldt County had two juveniles for twenty-three days. We've never had a limit on detention beds in the state of Iowa until last couple of years and they, now you gotta have, they're all licensed, they were licensed before. I mean, you have to license your beds, but, uh, we never had a, a limit on how many you could have. But since we've, uh, put our addition on, they won't license those twenty beds that we.
What?
No, they won't license them. Why didn't they do that when Bo County built, they built sixty-six of them, why didn't they?
They don't want you to get the service, they're trying to let your mom.
You got a monopoly going and they don't like you. Yeah. Yeah, that is something.
Really, I mean, really?
Yeah. Yeah, they say Bo County had, you know, I got some information on some of this stuff here.
So, can I ask what you can use those beds for then? If they're not gonna let you license them?
We, we got a, we've got a plan on what we're gonna try to do of trying to get them. It won't be going through, through the DHS doc, will you?
Okay.
The word other center that have so many beds, we're gonna try to buy some of them.
Oh, sure.
And they'll close theirs for their limit.
Oh, yeah, go the end round, yeah.
And we'll get those beds.
And then we have a shortage of all these.
Yeah. We got, at Eldora, we got forty bed license, twenty-nine percent of the time there was, uh, let's see, how'd that go, twenty-nine percent with empty beds, but we've got sixty, see, so that's where that twenty-nine percent comes in. Scott County and Davenport has eighteen licensed beds, they were forty-four percent unused. Woodbury County has twenty-one beds, they were forty-four percent unused. Dubuque County had six beds, they're fifty percent unused. North Iowa out of Waterloo has fifteen beds, they were fifty-one percent. Oak County in Des Moines has sixty-six beds and they were fifty-five percent unused. Lynn County has thirty-five and they were fifty-seven percent unused. North Iowa and Montrose, they had twenty-one beds and fifty-eight percent. And North Iowa and Cherokee has fifteen beds, they were sixty-two percent unused. And one more was, uh, Southwest Iowa Council, they have twenty-five beds and seventy-five, the beds were empty, so.
Let's see, how you rate, sir?
We're gonna try to, yeah, we're just gonna put out feeling and do what, what they may want for them. And, uh, hopefully, we'll be able to get them, but we don't know for sure yet, but. Another thing, in June, July and August of twenty fourteen, Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center averaged two hundred and forty-five trips per month with, with our transportation that we do. We employ eighty transporters throughout the state from border to border, provide out of state transportation and we have traveled to Nevada, Maine, Texas, Arkansas, Utah, in addition to surrounding states that pick up juveniles. Central Iowa is currently recruiting part-time transporters in Central Iowa with the anticipated increase in mental health. Transport in coming, coming months, so something to look into anyway.
Growing, that is, you're growing that.
We, this last month now, we're always a month behind in, in our figures, so it isn't in on this, this report, but, uh, November, we put out eight to ten thousand dollars to, to house our, because we got a limit of forty beds, we had to put them in other detention centers